Good evening, everyone. I am Beth McCoy, the superintendent, and I am going to launch this meeting since we don't yet have someone to facilitate, and we'll talk about that in a few minutes. But I'm calling to order a joint meeting of the three committees: Dover School Committee, Sherburne School Committee, and the Regional School Committee. They are three separate committees that we happen to be meeting in the same place at the same time for some K-12 visioning as well as some unity. Today is Tuesday, June 10th. It is 6:48 PM, and we are meeting in the Dover/Sherburne Middle School Library. Um, go back to the agenda? Sure. Okay. So the first is to... Yep, I would like to explain Union 50. So as you know, we are three school committees, we are three school committees. The region is its own municipality, and they stand on their own as a small town. Dover and Sherburne have agreed to share a superintendent along with the region. So Union 50 is the shared commitment to oversee the superintendent between Dover and Sherburne. So there is a group of three members from each town that will constitute Union 50 should you ever need to meet about the superintendent or hire a new superintendent that committee hasn't met in three years. It may meet again next year, it may not. But we need three representatives from Dover and three representatives from Sherburne to serve on that committee. Typically, it is the chair of those committees and two additional members. So I would like to turn it over to Sherburne. Is there someone, are there three people you'd like to nominate for Union 50? Becca is the chair.
Well, you have to vote the chair. So the reorganization, you're voting the chair of Union 50.
Yeah.
So you don't really, you don't approve the members. They've already appointed the members, so you're really voting...
Oh, they've appointed members to the subcommittees, so you're voting the chair.
Yeah, so you're voting for the chair and a secretary.
So who wants to vote for them?
So your chairs between Dover and Sherburne are Becca and Golly. So one of them could serve as president, and one could serve as secretary.
Okay. And I'm just running the meeting time.
Do we need to nominate?
Usually alternates whoever was the chair, Union 50, last year.
Right, and last year it was...
I think it was.
It was him. So it goes back to Sherburne.
Becca.
Yeah, and you'd be secretary.
So somebody needs, from Sherburne, needs to nominate.
Nominate Becca.
Or anyone, any of the six people can nominate.
I'll nominate Becca. I'm a nominator.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion?
No.
Yay, Becca!
Okay, don't let the mute work. All right, so, and because Becca is remote, we'll have to do roll call votes. So Becca, are you in favor of chairing Union 50?
We can't hear you.
I can't hear you.
Unmute, shut up.
Do you want to do a thumbs up or a thumbs down?
Her volume looks like, I think our volume is off. That was my guess. Because her microphone...
Yeah, it seems like it's working.
Speaker's not working?
Becca, thumbs up.
Can we get her a thumbs up?
For...
Oh, yeah, we got him.
Got him.
You can see it right there.
Nope, hold on, we got it.
She can't hear us either. Sorry, missed that part.
All right.
Can you hear me?
Yes!
Okay, I am having trouble hearing you guys, so I don't know what I'm voting for.
Are you saying yes?
Do you vote in favor?
I don't know, that's dangerous, Dawn. What am I voting for?
Do you vote in favor of Becca Hammond being the chair of Union 50? Should you need to find a new superintendent?
Oh, yes! Super glorious.
Okay, is there a second within the Dover and Sherburne committees? Nathaniel, a second? All right, any discussion? Okay, Becca said yes, sorry, we already filled. Yes?
Yes.
Well, actually, only them, sorry, only the Union 50 members vote.
We don't know who they are yet.
They, well, it should just be the chair and the two most senior people.
Okay, so...
So Becca, Golly.
You three, and over here would be you two and Becca.
Okay.
Yes.
Becca, yes. Becca, yes.
Yeah.
Nathaniel, yes. Okay, and then Golly?
Yes.
Kate, yes. Thank you.
I can't vote.
You can't vote yet.
I would've.
Pretty obvious, it's a part of the term.
That's very good. It makes no sense, but...
Okay, and then do we have a nomination for a Sherburne rep to be secretary?
Or Dover.
No, Golly, Golly only. Yes, nominate Golly as secretary of Union 50.
I will second Golly.
Okay, so of the voting members, Golly, are you in favor?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Jessie? Becca?
Yes.
Okay, and Becca?
Yes.
And Nathaniel?
Yes.
Excellent, great, okay, congratulations. We now have a president, Becca, and a secretary, Golly, of Union 50. I apologize for the confusion. Luckily, we don't use it that often, but maybe we should, so that becomes more normal. And that said, we alternate years in terms of who chairs the meeting with all of you coming together. It is Sherburne's turn to chair the meeting, and it doesn't have to be voted upon, but Angie has stepped forward as someone with experience. Any objections? Okay, congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, so here we go. So first of all, we're going to do a quick get-to-know-you, because there are lots of new faces, and then some of us old faces, you new faces, don't know yet, but I see some familiar faces from just around town. So we're going to start, we'll go, let's start at the end. We're going to go all the way around horseshoe. So if you'll just tell me your name, obviously you're in the Dover, maybe kids you have here, or interests, anything like that, just a quick, how'd you get here?
Okay. Hi, my name is Kevin Bilkey. I am a Dover resident of three years. I've got two girls at Chickering. My little one is Lizzie, she's in kindergarten, and my older one is Emma, and she is in second grade. We are longtime New Englanders via New York, New Hampshire, back in Boston, and sort of circular relocation here and there, but we are now three years in Dover, and we love it. I'm originally from Minnesota, but I'm a transplant here, and we're really excited to be part of the Dover community, and I'm really excited to be part of this committee.
Thank you.
I am Jessie Hall, part of the Dover School Committee. This is my, oh, this is the end of my second term, will be my third year, sorry, not term, second year, it'll be my third year this fall. I have a third-grade girl, a second-grade boy, and an almost kindergartner. He misses the cutoff by four days.
Oh!
So he will join Chickering, not this fall, but the following fall, and will be one of the older kids in the class, very well-prepared. Let's see, what else? I joined this group after being part of the school advisory committee. It was a great kind of foray into the work. I have a health policy background. I love policy work, and I love participating in this group, because I love, you know, contributing to the community, and knowing what my kids, what good hands my kids are in, generally.
Kate Cook, finishing my first year on Dover School Committee. Born and raised in Dover, went to Dover/Sherburne, graduated from Dover/Sherburne in 1995. I just attended my 30th high school reunion, which was really fun. I have a son who is a kindergartner at Chickering, and a daughter who is in third grade at Charles River. And I'm just thrilled to be a part of this community and committee. I also do a lot of work with the library, community enrichment through PTO, and basically any way I can get into schools and hang out with kids and teachers, that's it.
I'm Golly Supere. This is my second term, and I'm thrilled to again be here and serve on this committee and work for an amazing group of people here. I have a son, he is third grade, finishing third grade, and a daughter finishing sixth grade. And I started volunteering in PTO, and then I transitioned to Dover School Committee, and then I elected a lot, so I volunteered to serve again, and I got voted in, so I'm thrilled to be here.
I'm Lindsay Nye. I've, this is my first year, I was just appointed to take over the vacancy. I've been in Dover for about 13 years. I have a daughter who just graduated last week, who was in the, started in kindergarten, went all the way through the school system. And then I have twin boys in eighth grade. I've spent time on the Dover Recycling Committee, PTO stuff, basically everything similar that I could volunteer for to help the kids out, and so I'm excited to share my years of wisdom in town on this committee.
Hi, my name's Mary Louder. I have a third grader at Pine Hill and a preschooler at Pine Hill. Very cute. They are very cute. I've been heavily involved in the CSA at Pine Hill. I've been a Sherburne resident for five years now. I also lead a third-grade Brownie Troop, Gresgau Brownie Troop, so I'm a really strong advocate for kids, it's real large.
Thank you.
Hey, everybody, Jeff Cassidy. This is, I just finished four years in the Dover School Committee. This will be my first meeting in the Regional School Committee. I have two daughters, one who's just finishing seventh grade, and one that's just finishing fourth grade. We've been in town for seven years, and I grew up in the Boston area, so not too far from, not too far from home.
I'm Angie Johnson. I started, we moved here 11 years ago from Atlanta, and when we got here, I got involved in the CSA, so CSA people, I really appreciate that, it's a lot of fun. And then I moved to the Sherburne School Committee, and then I filled a vacancy, and this is my first full term on the region. I have three children. My daughter came to Dover/Sherburne in seventh grade. It's hard being a girl from the South, starting in middle school, it's a little awkward, but she graduated and had a great experience academically, was really strong here, and she went on to the University of Tennessee, and she's now a practicing nurse at Beth Israel Deaconess downtown. And I have a son who is almost 21. He is a junior now at Colgate, not Colgate, that's where he was, that was his old school.
And St. Louis.
He was, okay, but he's a soccer player. He's now at Holy Anacin, at Holy Cross. Holy Anacin's was their school in Atlanta, Holy Cross, and he's on the soccer team there, he's captain. And then my youngest is 16, who's driving, which scares me to death, and he's a rising junior at the high school, and he played on the very fun soccer team that they had this year, which was all kinds of fun. And I have to say that academically and support-wide, this system has been very good, especially for him. You know, we had some learning things that he needed ironed out, and they were right on it from a very young age, so I appreciate the administration and all the teachers and them recognizing where children need support. So that's why I'm here, is because I feel like this school district really goes above and beyond.
You think that's for the sake of the new members?
Yes, I think you should, because they may not know, they might think you two are reversed, but yeah. It could be, didn't he?
Yeah. Beth McCoy, I'm a superintendent, this is, I think it's my third year as superintendent. Prior to that, I was five years as assistant superintendent. I live in Sherburne. I'm going to say it, ready? I have a rising senior.
And you didn't cry today.
And I, my daughter is finishing freshman year, and I am just thrilled to be able to work in a community where I wear multiple hats, and I would say, you know, I certainly have not worked harder at any other job, just because I'm so dedicated to Dover and Sherburne and the school district.
Jenny Calco, I'm assistant superintendent. This is also my, end of my third year, and I have a two-and-a-half-year-old and a seven-year-old. Originally, I started out as a high school history teacher, then went into work at an education nonprofit, and then was a curriculum director, and here I am in Dover/Sherburne.
I'm Dawn Fettori. I actually live in Dover, and I won't tell you how many years I grew up there, but I've had two, two of my own children go through the Dover/Sherburne School District, K through 12, and out of college, and being very successful, I spent six years on the Dover School Committee before stepping into central office, so if I act like I know stuff, I had spent six, I had four years as chair, so I do know this stuff backwards. And again, just willing to donate my time just because of the stellar school system, and I feel like the product that my children came out of, that's why I think we all work so hard. So happy to be a member of this team. And again, any financial questions for the new people? Come see me, I love giving the finance, school finance one-on-one talk.
Good evening. My name's Nate Jackson. I live in Sherburne. This is the conclusion of my first year, first term on the Sherburne School Committee. I have three kids, they're, I have a rising sixth grader, who's 11, just turned 11, and I've got a rising third grader who is eight, and I have a rising kindergartner leaving Pine Hill preschool, going to kindergarten next year.
Yeah, they probably have the, our kiddos are in the same class.
Oh, they probably are, they probably are. I was laughing when you said it, because I was like, oh my gosh, another preschool parent. Let's see, we moved to Sherburne five years ago, and before that, we were kind of nomads, we lived like literally all over the country, and let's see, yeah, that's about it for us, I can't write anything, anything else, so...
Hi, everybody, Bea Cadiela. Angie, thank you for doing this, because I did not know anybody until now, even though I'm finishing my first year, so it was really nice to be able to hear about people's kids. I've been in Sherburne now for 10 years, almost, kind of went through kind of friends of the Sherburne Library, the CSA, and now ended up here, see what happens next. I have two kids, they match up with Golly, we have a third-grade boy and a sixth-grade boy as well.
Wow.
I'm originally from the Midwest, and so took a little while to get used to the New England vibe, if you will. And I'm really happy to be here, I think it's really important to volunteer and be part of your community, and that's what we're doing here.
Hi, everyone, I'm Kate Menzelini, I'll get the plate fixed. First time, first day, like, it's like funny, it's June, and this is my first day, but I'm really excited to be here. I have three kids, rising third grader at Pine Hill, rising, will be coming into kindergarten in the fall, and I have a two-year-old as well, who goes to an infant toddler daycare in Wellesley. I was born in Philadelphia, moved to Up This Way when I was going into high school, so I went to Newton Country Day, and then I graduated from Wellesley High. Went to Northeastern, got my MBA at Simmons, so kind of did the post-high school education up this way in Boston. I work at John Hancock, which is the US segment of Manual Life, which is a global financial services company, and I'm in a technology role, so I think that's one of the things that I, I'm excited to bring to this group, very passionate female in technology, I'm often at these types of tables, and I'm like one of few from a gender perspective, but really passionate about, especially females in technology, and especially in software engineering, so excited to bring that, but also passionate about, I think a lot of the things you all said, contributing to the community and education and values. I'm also a Girl Scout leader for second grade right now, Brownies.
So that's where we've seen each other.
Yes, camping last weekend, I guess.
Last weekend. Oh, I camped last weekend. It was not fun.
I tried to forget about it, so...
They're all still drying out.
Really excited to be here, so nice to meet everyone.
Bill Alphano, also first day, first everything. Sherburne resident for four years, one daughter, Maxwell, she's in third grade at Pine Hill. She ran for student council, so she told me I have to run for something. She, her big debate was, does she run at the first opportunity, or does she wait for fifth grade so she can be the president? So she ran in her first opportunity, because she didn't want to wait. My background is marketing, it started out in sports, it went to media about, boy, 11 years ago now, I decided to move that over to nonprofit. So I'm with the PanMax Challenge now, as the marketing guy there, embrace manager Dana Farber, and I am very happy to be a member. Nice to meet all of you.
Becca?
Hi, I'm Becca Hand, I'm finishing my second year on the Sherburne School Committee. Have been living in Sherburne since December of 2019, kind of an auspicious time to move somewhere new, but really loved living in Sherburne and wanted to get involved. I grew up in New England, and my mom was involved in lots of things, so that inspired me to really contribute and volunteer. I've got two boys at Pine Hill, Dylan is in fifth grade going into sixth, Oliver's in third grade going into fourth. And I also work at Bevy, which is a water machine company, if you've heard of it. If you haven't, it's pretty cool, so try and check it out, and I am thrilled to be here.
Well, thank you all.
We're both dialing in.
I just wanted, because I know a lot of times we come in, we see each other, and we know each other via nameplate, but I kind of wanted to like see how we connected and see what our commonalities are, so I liked that. So with that being said, before we get started, I informed Beth that I was going to maybe make a quick comment, so we're going to do community comments after this. Is there anyone on for that? No? So there are no community comments. But that being said, community comments is a time, if you're new here, where people will come and they can state things that they're concerned about, things that they want us to know that are great, some things that are bad, and the thing about community comments, and you'll learn that in the class you take, it's not a question and answer, it seems really counterintuitive, because usually when people express something, you want to either offer advice or tell them what you're, but unfortunately, that's not what it is, because the reason, the thought process behind it via the state mandate is that we're a group, and so if one of us is expressing an opinion, my opinion may not be Golly's opinion, and so if I say something, Golly's like, no, that's not at all what I think, you know, so since we're not, and we can't kind of speak for the group, you know, so we don't, we just take their comments, and I'm always writing it down, people might think I'm, you know, furiously, and that's because I actually do sometimes want to ask Beth or Jenny and say, hey, somebody brought up X, Y, or Z, because you can always email them and say, that was a concern. So with that being said, you know, when you watch the news, I have personal experience, one of my friends was on that plane yesterday from Atlanta to Orlando, which had to make the quick emergency landing in Jacksonville, because smoke filled the cabin, and she's texting me, when she got off, I thought I was a goner, and I'm like, what are you talking about? I hadn't seen it, and then I see it on the news, I'm like, oh, there you go. And so it reminded me of this, when you hear about planes, you don't hear about the ones that land safely, because that's not, you know, that's not newsmaking, but the ones that have trouble, you hear about. So when you're in community comments, a lot of things that you hear are just really the negative, and sometimes as a committee member, because we're putting all this work in, you can, you can feel really kind of saddened by it, and frustrated and defeated, so what I want you all to know is, you're hearing about, you know, the bad, but there's more good than bad in what is going on every day at schools. Our children are a product of it. I was at graduation last week, and I've got to tell you, I've never seen more accomplished students, not, you know, like where they're going to college, but the speaking they were doing, I mean, just the performing from the choir, it was just a whole encompassing of, you know, young adults who are going out into the world, and they're going to represent Dover/Sherburne well. No matter where they're going, they are prepared. And so that is the job of this district, and our administrators and our educators, they put their best foot forward all the time. And I think as a part of the community and the committee, what we are trying to do is what is best for the students involved, and also the teachers and the administrators, and also, you know, being responsible with the community money. So that being said, I just want you to think about it when you're mired in something, and like, oh my gosh, the world's falling, it's actually not, you know, it's just like everything else, you hear more about the bad than the good, but just keep in mind that there's a lot of great, so...
I'll just add to that, yes, I think the community comments do tend to be more constructive, and they're trying to fix something that they see is broken, which we should take into account, and we can absolutely have discussion about it as a group, we can put it on agenda item for a later meeting. It is very awkward to not respond, because you want to respond when somebody's asking a question or raising a concern, but I will say, I've seen a fair amount of positive comments too, like people do come and talk about depreciation for the teachers and the administration and things, so it's not all doom and gloom, but it is oftentimes feedback that we should take and listen to, and try to understand, and have broader conversation about it, but in the moment, it's not the time to react to it.
Can I ask a quick question? For, so when families email us, are responses, are they based off of everyone's use here kind of as a committee, or am I, how does that work?
So, well, here's my, generally, as a school committee member, and you'll learn this in your class, you're answering on behalf of the committee. Like, if they're talking to you as a parent-to-parent, that's an outside-scope thing, but if you're responding like, this is the process, or the policy, or the procedure we follow, it has to be, so sometimes with that, what I used to do is, I would forward it on to the chair, who was Mark, and I would say, this concern has been expressed, I would forward it on to him, and then he would then, you know, get, take it to the administration and say, this has been brought to our attention, you know, so, so we could kind of get a full picture of what's going on. So that's generally how I would, because, you know, I, there are some things that I might think, oh, that's a great idea, and the rest of you would go, no, that's a terrible idea, why would you say that? And that's, you know, it's a hard line to walk, but then, you know, I don't want to step over the line of something that the administration's trying to accomplish, or something that the rest of you would say, no, we would never agree with that, we would never be in agreement with that policy or whatever, so...
But also, you can bring some of the comments, or is a general theme happening, if people are talking to you about things, bring it to the group and we talk about it.
Yeah, and like I said, generally what we do is filter it through the chairs, and then, or the vice chair, and then we kind of disseminate it out, and I mean, that can happen, you know, we can sit on a thing like this, information's been brought forward, please do not, then that's the other thing too, because you have to be careful, you can't respond to everybody on it, because it's, it can, you know, but you just put it out there, this has been brought forward, and then you just kind of leave it, and we'll discuss it, we'll put it as an agenda item, and that's that. So it's just hard, because everybody, you know, especially as you're just starting, it took me a little while to get up to speed, because the last committee heard that they talked about circuit breaker, and I thought we were having an electrical problem, but we weren't. It was, it was a finance thing, so there you go. So I'm just trying to get some of those out of the way, because I've stumbled around for a few months, so it kind of helps a little bit, so... But if you have any questions, feel free to email, you know, any member who's been here, and we can point you in the right direction. Okay. All right, so with that being said, we have no community comments, now we have superintendent comments.
Okay, great. Good evening, everyone. I will be brief this evening, as we had individual meetings all within the last week, but I too want to recognize the 153 seniors that crossed the stage last Thursday. It was a very proud evening for all of us, and I know all of you, going off and doing incredible things, products of an exceptional school system. You know, I think, as those of you who know, when one of our district goals is focusing on student voice this past year, and I had an opportunity to have a superintendent advisory council, we got feedback from kids, where everybody said, I wish my teachers knew, I wish my parents knew. I knew so many of the kids crossing the stage, not only because they're my kid's age now, and I've known many of them since kindergarten, but because I've interacted with them in this role, and had given them an opportunity to have voice. Lindsay Snider Amber was critical in the calendar task force that presented, you know, the deep dive they did into looking at that work, so, so many kids that I'm proud of academically, with their leadership skills, on the field, on the stage, just so much to be proud of. Chickering has their fifth-grade recognition on Friday, Pine Hill has their recognition on Monday, and on Tuesday, the middle school will be recognizing their eighth graders, who will soon be freshmen at the high school. So lots of celebrations going on, I've already thanked our educators, and our parents, and community members, and volunteers at each of the individual meetings for the work that they've done. I do want to share a couple of the I-wishes, and just talk about how that fits into the goals for next year. I know you've all heard the draft school improvement plans, and you'll see them again after we spend the summer tweaking them in our leadership team retreats, but one of the things we're going to do with our administrators and our teachers in August, as we gather again, is looking at the feedback that our students gave. So grades three through 12, I'll fill out one card that said, I wish my teachers knew, I wish my parents knew. And so the leadership team, K-12, well, the principals, assistant principals, central office, we sorted through the cards, and literally took all 900 of them, and sorted them into common themes, and just seeing the different kids' handwriting, and having that tangible, like, look at this staff row, and there's, you know, some individual voices here and there, I think it's a really powerful experience. So we're going to have our teachers do that next year, and then we're going to be asking some of our parent groups to do that with the, I wish my parents knew, cards, and then doing some sort of display for Parents' Night, so that we can see what your kids, our kids, want you to know about their experience, and then we'll be getting, I wish my kids knew, we'll be asking you at Back to School Night, what would you like your kids in general to know, as well as our teachers, but a few themes. The elementary student said, I wish my teachers knew how much I appreciate them and really like them. They love reading, they love their electives, and I think I mentioned to some of the elementary teams that we need to think about furniture and rug size as they get bigger at the elementary level. The middle school, again, this is our opportunity to share our voice, so it's not always positive. They do love their teachers, but they also want to recognize, their teachers recognize but they also want to recognize, their teachers recognize how hard they work in middle school, how much homework they have, that they love projects and they want more of them. And they hate being called on when they don't have their hand raised. Probably don't know the reason. So maybe there's another strategy for engaging kids in the classroom. And then our high school students really appreciate their teachers and the passion and the connections. You know, I know, I and you all moved to Sherburne and Dover for the community and you hear that from the kids, the sense of community they have with their teachers. They're under a lot of stress. And yes, challenge success has done a lot of work in the last 10 years, but we have a ways to go. They want us to realize how busy their schedule is, both in school and out of school. And the people out of school to realize how busy it is in school and vice versa. Lots of tests, lots of tests, lots of tests, and often they overlap in chunks. And we still have some wifi work to do. So Mr. Hall has his hands full responding to our students. But super powerful. So that launching into next year, we're going to look at the student feedback, have it inform the goals that we're working on as a district and as a school, but continue to share the best practices around collaboration, around voice, around choice, looking at data and subgroups and making sure that all of our students are making progress academically, socially, emotionally, school safety, not only from a emergency perspective, but also communicating around emergencies and then continuing to look at our policies. Anybody who wants to volunteer for the policy subcommittee, you can work every day with Angie.
Same like it.
And we're updating our four handbooks this summer too, to make sure that we're everything up to snuff. And then communication, we'll be critiquing Parents Square and what that looks like based on feedback that we got from all of our parents. That said, we've got lots of great hiring things going on. As hard as it is for our educators and staff to make either life changes about moving or raising a family or retiring, it's bittersweet. We appreciate everybody and all they've given to our district. And it's an opportunity to hire some fantastic new people. And I have the privilege of meeting with all the finalists before they sign their contract. And I'm so excited about some of the educators that are going to be crossing our thresholds this fall, well, August, summer. So very exciting. And this summer, Mr. Conklin, do you want to give some updates about what our teachers will be working on independently or in small groups this summer?
Yep. So I think we're very fortunate as a district to be able to offer teachers summer workshop days where they get paid to do work over the summer. Not every district can offer that. It leads to a lot of work and improvements in the curriculum and school culture over the summer. So just some examples of things that our teachers are working on over the summer. It should be a surprise that at the elementary level, we're continuing to work on math, sort of in our pacing guides. What is the right pacing for getting through the whole curriculum? There are some grades where we learned this year, maybe we should flip this unit, move it in front of another unit. So teachers are going to be working on that this summer. We have a group of teachers that's going to be working on our beginning of our elementary literacy program review. So looking at our current games of study, writers workshop, empowering writers and foundations, and seeing whether they measure up against the criteria that we set out. At the middle school level, we're continuing to revise our social studies curriculum. We're getting work on revising our science curriculum. At the high school level, doing some revision on our history curriculum to make sure that students are getting to the present day and that we're modernizing it more. We've worked on science lab safety going on. Our co-teaching model between our special educators and our general educators, something that we're offering more professional development on this summer. And then our teachers that teach our advanced placement courses, there's a new platform, AP Central, that allows students to get some more practice with the AP tests. There's some course revisions for advanced placement. So some of our teachers are working on staying up to date on the updated courses and the updated resources available. So that's just a small snippet of a lot of the work. Probably over 200 days will be worked over the summer by various educators.
And we also recognize that the summer is an opportunity to reconnect with family and friends for all of our staff and employees and find some joy. Because as you know, education is a tough profession and it takes a lot of energy and love to get through the school year. So all of the work that will happen, yes, and we're hoping that everybody gets to take a breath and kind of reset for next year so we can launch with energy and enthusiasm. That includes all of you. And I would like to propose that we put just a feeler out there or plant the seed that will be coming together in August, which typically we don't always do. It kind of depends on the circumstance. But we're going to have a late meeting in August because we're redoing all of our handbooks. So we need you folks to look at them so they can be ready before the start of the school year. We have some policy work that'll be coming your way. So get ready to raise some policies. We're going to be doing another legal, a second legal workshop for all of you on civil rights and due process. And next year, we're going to be launching into negotiations with our teachers union. So we want to spend some time perhaps in late August to getting ready for that. So stay tuned. You might get an email in your email box and not we'll call you.
Thanks.
Questions, comments, feedback?
Only quick question I saw on the schedule for August 26 via Zoom. Is that official that we can continue to use Zoom when needed for public media?
Yep, 27, 2027.
Okay.
Yeah. So thank you for pointing that out. Right now, the night before school starts, we try to be as late as possible. Get really much somewhere as possible, but we'd love for everybody to come together on Zoom whether we are, I mean, you'll probably be home packing your kids lunches at that point, just to just get all the gears rolling. Thank you for bringing that up.
So the next thing is the homework and holiday task force update.
Okay. So as you know, two years ago, we launched a committee of educators, students, school committee members, community members to look at the holidays that we have off from school and whether or not we wanted to add some, whether we wanted to stay status quo, whether we wanted to take some away. We got community input from all of those stakeholder groups. They really, really did a thorough job looking at the data and coming out of that realized, based on, you know, the feedback from the community of three committees decided to leave our calendar as is. I will say, it was a learning experience for our students, myself included, that I went in thinking I wanted one thing, then did the research, talked to everybody in the community and came out feeling very differently. And I think some of you felt that way as well. And I think that's powerful that, you know, the writing's not always on the wall. You've got to do the work and do the research. That said, there were some very strong feelings by the committee and then supported by the school committees that we need to look at homework on holidays where we do have school, tests on those days, and how to support kids who might need to miss school even though their peers are in session. So Denny, last year, launched a homework and holiday task force and ran through a model kind of protocol this year and policy this year, it's not a policy anymore, practice around that. So take it away. Go.
Yes. So the committee last year ended up being myself, administrators from different buildings, educators and students from various buildings. So this is our first year of putting these new guidelines in place. The big piece of it was setting aside specific days where there's not going to be any homework on that specific holiday and then the day that students return back. So it's no work, it's no tests, no quizzes, no types of assessments. And you might recall that there were three holidays that we had been considering adding to the calendar, volley, Eid and Lunar New Year. So we chose those three holidays to be three of the days where we weren't going to have any work or assessments that were scheduled for that day since there is school and then the day that students would return if they were celebrating that holiday. We put into place some guidelines to make it easier for students to communicate with their teachers about whether or not they needed or they weren't going to be in school or if they needed some accommodations. We also wanted to put in some guidelines for students that celebrate other holidays that might not be either calendar holidays or those three holidays that I just mentioned, again, to make it easier for students to be able to advocate for what their needs are and to have that communication with their teachers and educators about what they needed. So we gathered again about a month ago to assess how this year's policy or this year's guidelines went. And it was really nice that it was just overall very positive feedback about this year. I think the first thing that people said was that students who celebrated any type of religious or cultural holidays, they felt less stressed out this year about having that absence on that date because they knew they weren't going to be missing a test or a quiz or a presentation. So put them at ease for going forward and talking to that teacher, especially, you know, if you're at the middle school or the high school and you're going through five or six classes. It just made it a lot easier for them. One of the things that was really nice to hear from students is that, you know, a teacher or administrator might announce, you know, the next few days, we're not going to have any tests, we're not going to have any assessments or projects. And other students would say, why? And it gave students, it gave educators a chance to actually explain what those holidays were, who celebrated them. So the students shared that they had a lot of really productive conversations with their peers about what these holidays meant. And I think that's what we wanted. We didn't just want these dates and these kind of no work days. We wanted our students to have a better understanding of each other and their cultures and religions. So it's great to hear from students and from teachers that that happened. The third big thing we heard was that these no work, no assessment periods actually benefited everyone, regardless of whether or not you celebrated the holiday. As we've learned from the I wish campaign, our students sometimes feel very stressed out and overburdened. So the fact that there were these extra periods of time where they got a break from some of that work was just a nice mental health break for the vast majority of our students. Again, not a ton of criticism or things that we would change moving forward. At the high school, the only tricky part was we had this convergence in March of the ELAM CAS seminar day, and I think it was Eid. So there was just a lot going on. So there was this big block where teachers couldn't give any assessments. So that clustered some of them, but seminar day is something that happens every other year. So that's just something that we wanted to be mindful of. Our educators still want to encourage students to advocate for themselves and to have those conversations. But based on this year of kind of pilot of this, that committee just recommends that we continue going forward with these guidelines since they worked well. And we are going to update the document to give to teachers and staff for next year's set of holidays and dates so they can, because believe it or not, some more planning for next year already. So they can have an idea of, you know, how they can plan their schedules for their students. So happy to answer any questions people have about the committee or the guidelines.
Sure. The MCAS dates statewide, you don't change MCAS dates, right? It's MCAS for ninth grade, it's for everybody across the state.
So for the, for certain grades, there's a window where we can select the dates and then for certain grades, it is that date and everybody in the state is taking it on that date. So we have some flexibility in some grades and no flexibility in others.
Thanks for that report. And I think that's exactly what we're hoping to achieve through all this. I think as we go into next year, I think we need to continue to reinforce with the teachers. I mean, I have a small sample size, but the seventh grade seemed to not abide by many of those where they still were getting homework and there were still tests. So I think it's great that universally, like it seemed like it mostly went out, but I think we were probably still pockets of teachers that, whether they didn't get the reminder or weren't super paying attention if a student didn't specifically say, hey, I'm celebrating this holiday.
Could it be added to the calendar? You know, we have the calendar online. That might be a nice way to reinforce it. So parents and administration is aware of the policy.
Add to the calendar, I've also talked to different building leaders and said, because of schedule send, you could send all of your, schedule all of your emails now for every holiday next year to go out as a reminder a couple of days beforehand. So while in the summer where we have a little extra bandwidth, that's also something that we can do. And part of it is also just letting our students know kind of what their rights are in this. And sometimes a student might not want to talk to the teacher directly about it, but maybe they have a guidance counselor or another trusted adult where they can say like, just wanted to let you know, like I got work and I should have gotten it. And then they can, we can address it without kind of calling out a specific teacher. They can talk to somebody and feel like they're not kind of ratty out someone.
Is there a way to give the students more agency over when they might do that work as opposed to saying like, this is a, this is a effectively a, an empty day of assignments, tests, homework and so on, have like the students, especially in the older grades, probably have like just like more control over their schedules and say like, you're accountable for this type of work. This is the deadline. You can choose to do it at any point in the week if your holiday schedule requires that you take a day off, for example.
I mean, a lot of the stuff that students have the high school level projects, there's not, the projects can't be due on those specific dates, but they can be due around those dates. So we're encouraging students to time manage and to think about how they can spread that out. So while there are not, may not be a test or there might not be something specifically due, we want to say like, if you're celebrating those holidays, you might want to plan your schedule around them. But if not, you know, that might be a date that you can kind of bite off a little piece of that project on that date. So a lot of the deadlines at the high school level are over a broader span now, not like these pinpointed dates. So I think we're trying to help students be better managers of their time.
And I can speak as both an educator and a mom of two high schoolers, that, you know, if, based on your course load and which courses you signed up for, if you're feeling that one, like three day span is really overwhelming with work and projects, our teachers are so understanding and students advocate for themselves and can forward and say, is there any chance I could turn in my paper on Monday just because I have all of these other things going on? And our educators are very supportive of that. That enhances the educators pushing kids to advocate because they need to learn that skill before they walk across the stage.
Yeah.
Great.
Anyone else? Thank you, Denny. Thank you, Beth. Okay. The next thing we have to do is to, the approval to invite Dover selectmen and a Sherburne select board member to serve on the school committee negotiating team. Do you want to do some explaining?
Sure. So three years flew by for those of you who sat on the negotiation team.
I didn't think it was this year, but it was actually this year.
Half of the candidates here.
Jeff.
I didn't have, I had Liz and Mark.
No, he was.
Mark was for the region at some point.
He was for Dover.
Me and Liz.
I had Kate and Lynn. I just looked that up.
So we're, the U will all be entering negotiations with the teachers union next year. And then once we negotiate, the teachers union, we work with our, our groups. They're not unionized, but our administrative assistance, educational assistance, custodial workers and food service. So John and I usually take care of that. That said, if you could please make a motion in each of your committees to invite somebody from the select board in both towns to come and be a member of that because they obviously understand the larger landscape of yes, the education budget is the largest piece of each pie in each town, but certainly they need to balance that against the needs of fire and police and represent, you know, the taxpayers that they were elected to represent, just as you are as well. So you'd have to do it by committee.
So shall we start with Dover? Or you want me to start with the region?
It's up to you, Jeff.
Does the region do it? Like just Dover and Sherburne separately?
Yeah, region does both. Yeah. And then Dover will do Dover and Sherburne will do Sherburne, just so you know. So when the two join, the Dover selectman person will vote with the Dover school committee. And then the Sherburne select board person will vote with the Sherburne school committee person. And then it alternates who gets to vote with the region. So that's, that's how that works.
This whole joint thing is really annoying. I don't know if you know that. Finding a superintendent sometimes is hard because you're like, you only have 16 people you have to deal with. That doesn't sound bad, does it? So anyway, here we go.
What is, can I ask, this is, I've never been part of this, but I heard horror stories from other districts. Like how hard is this and what are the risks if we don't do it well?
Well, so let me, do you want to speak, so I was on it, not last time, but the time before. And it went well. I mean, it was, it was good. I mean, I feel like everyone does this with the best of intentions. You know, our teachers are trying to have a good living wage, which in this economic climate is becoming a little more difficult than I thought it would be. And, you know, we're also trying to be mindful of each town's budgetary restraints. So that's how it goes.
And we can, we can talk more. We have actually an executive session about that where we can talk about it where it's not in public.
Yeah. But it's, it's, it's not, like if you're, if you're on the committee, what I'm saying is it's, it's not a torture session at all. It's fine.
And we have a very strong positive relationship with our teachers union and their presidents. I meet with them a few times a month to talk about concerns and, you know, problems all together. And I think that, you know, the last several rounds have been very positive, very collaborative. And this last time, there were several issues that were addressed. And I think that there was a lot that got done. I'm sure that there'll be more pieces coming forward this time around, but I'm hopeful that perhaps not as many.
Well, like I said, from the last time that I did, I didn't do it this last time I did, it's the time before. And I think every year, we just try to get a little closer into like a mutual understanding and balance. And it seems to be working. So I don't want to, I don't want to jinx it, but it's working. So Goldie, could you?
Can I also, I have a follow up question. Time commitment and prior experience or what type of experience could help in that?
So time commitment, you want to talk about last time?
Yeah. So time commitment, it is an extended period of time because you are actually doing this over several months. It's not negotiating in a private sector where, you know, you sit down, you hash it out over a few days. There's the teachers, teachers union, there's the school committee. You are getting together on a regular cadence. We try to set up the meetings ahead of time, but it's at least monthly for several hours like each of those nights. But it's not like you're doing it for five days, like 10 hour days in a row. It's manageable in the, in the time where it's spread out. But it is an extended period of time over the school year.
And it's generally mutually agreed upon. Like we're not, they're not giving wacky times that aren't going to work. So.
Yeah. Because the teachers teach during the day. Everybody else has day jobs, you meet in the evening. It's usually from like 6:00 to 9:00 PM, something like that.
I mean, it's definitely time, but it's not inordinate.
And this is just for the, the non-school committee members though, right? Like we don't need to decide who from each committee.
No, no, no.
Yeah.
I think they just want some, and that's the thing about being new. I mean, I feel like sometimes when new people come in, we just kind of keep, like as you said, like you hadn't done the introductions before. I don't want us to just like throw you in there and go, okay, here you go. And you're going, what, we're doing what now? And that's, so it's just kind of nice to have a lay of the land because there are so many of us that are new. And so it's nice to know kind of what you're going to volunteer and give some thought to like, is this something I would like to dedicate my time to? And that's, that's great. Because especially if you have some kind of negotiating experience or you've done labor law, we love that. So that's great.
But this is, to your point, we're actually just approving right now that each committee is approving, approving to have a select person with them.
Yeah. Because we have to have Yeah, because we have to have somebody from each town.
So it gives them the summer to figure out, they have to go back to their boards.
Yeah, and figure out which person will dedicate that amount of time as well. So, Goli, your, your motion is to approve to invite the Dover Selectmen.
Yeah. Okay, do I have a motion for approval to invite Dover Selectmen to designate a member to serve on the school committee negotiation team?
Kay Cook, so moved.
Thank you, Kay. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Thank you, thanks. All in favor? Right motion. Okay. So Sherburne, would you like to go next? Becca?
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve inviting a member of the Sherburne Select Board to negotiate with the Sherburne School Committee?
May I?
Do I have a second?
You have to do a roll call.
Roll call. Becca, sorry.
Sorry, I'm having trouble hearing. I wasn't sure if we got a second. Nathaniel, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mega?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Becca, yes. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, all in favor? Any opposed?
No.
We just, it's been a day.
We're glad you're here, Becca, thank you. So finally, is the region, so ours, our motion sounds a bit different. So, region, I would like to invite a motion to approve a Dover Selectman and a Sherburne Select Board member to serve on the school committee negotiating team, since we're a mixed bag, we have to have one from either.
Jeff, so you move.
Do I have a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor? All four, motion carries.
And quick comment to everybody who's new, why we did roll call is because Becca is virtual, so anytime you have a single person, at least one person virtually, you need to do a roll call.
Right. Thank you, John. Okay, so that takes care of that, and we'll, when we adjourn, I'll explain the executive session thing, so we'll get to that. So the last thing, or the, one of the last things that we have to vote on are consent items, and one of them is to appoint Superintendent Beth McCoy to the Tech and Accept Board of Directors. Do you want to explain that?
Sure. So we belong to two collaboratives, the Accept Collaborative in Natick and the Tech Collaborative in Walpole, and so as much as all of us at this table and our educators try to educate all of our students here in our schools, there are some students who need such a level of care and support, or there are not many of a certain profile of students, and it's best to send them to a place where they can join with students from Natick and students from Wellesley to get the support that they need and to have a cohort of students that they can learn and grow with. So we belong to those, those two collaboratives, and we send students, you know, as special education teams decide is appropriate with parents, to those collaboratives. Just like the Dover Sherburne Schools have a school committee, both collaboratives have a board of directors. For the Accept Collaborative in Natick, the superintendents of the towns that are members tend to sit on that board. The Tech Collaborative in Walpole is mostly superintendents and a few school committee chairs. It's been past practice here that you have me serve on both. It's a great opportunity for me to see the facilities, to make sure that we're providing the supports for our kids, but also to talk with other superintendents in the area about problems of practice, share ideas and strategies I've really grown and learned from my colleagues on those committees, so that would be my recommendation, but it's certainly up to each committee to decide.
Can I ask what they, what those two specifically do? I'm not familiar with those groups, it sounds like they're for special education.
Special education programming for students that we can't meet their needs in the district. So if they're medically fragile or they're, they need behavioral supports that are beyond the means of our educators in our classrooms, then we send those students to those districts.
Is the Tech one in Walpole specific to, like, what's that?
Yeah, each one has, you know, some, some of the same programming, some niche programming. We also benefit from the Accept Collaborative provides us bus transportation for our students who go out of district, either to collaboratives or to public and private schools, perhaps like Landmark. And we also get buying power by coming together as a group of 10 schools or 13 schools and saying, you know, we want to work with whatever vendor, and we get better, better prices because of that.
Yeah, so Tech does a lot of our collaborative purchasing agreements. So food service, all of our food service contracts are bid through Tech with all the participating. Dover, I just participated, and Tech ran your heating oil open bid, so they, they actually work, think about collaboratively, they pull a bunch of districts together to do tasks more efficiently.
So not just special education, there's a lot of rational efficiency too.
They both have a different flavor of what they do. Tech is definitely more into the collaborative purchasing. Accept has tons of PD, I remember they both eat PD, but they also agree, like, we have jobalikes in both those collaboratives for multiple positions in a school district, so it's really just a way to bring them together, and we pay dues to be, to participate in both those collaboratives.
Yes, and thank you, John. They do both offer professional development to our educators, so beyond what we offer here or they might find in a university, they offer special education courses, they offer, you know, math courses, there's a great course this summer which is based on Taylor Swift songs around literature, so really cool offerings for our, our teachers, especially as they need to keep up with their coursework to recertify in five years, so lots of benefits.
And the second part of the consent items, so since these are consent items we get to vote on, this is a grouping. The second thing is the approval of the joint school committee minutes from April 29, 2025, and you all can vote on it even though you weren't here. I read through them, I see no errors. It was, that was our meeting, which you'll, you'll become familiar with, where we do the evaluation of the superintendent, and that's a whole process, which if it was your first time, or even if it's your fifth time like me, it's still a lot to absorb, and I learned something new every time. So that's what that was, and if you, if you click onto it, you can click the full report when you, there's a link to it on there, so if you're so interested, and it is, it's neat to read. So with that being said, we'll do this again by committee, and I'll start again with Dover to approve the consent items for the appointment to Beth McCoy to Tech and Accept and the approval of the joint school committee minutes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to appoint Superintendent McCoy to Tech and Accept Board of Directors and also approval of joint school committee minutes from April 29, 2025?
Kay Cook, so moved.
Thank you, Kay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jesse. All in favor? Great, motion carries.
All right, Becca, Sherburne.
All right. May I have a motion from the Sherburne School Committee to approve the consent agenda?
Yeah, it's all together. May I?
Thank you, may I have a second?
Nathaniel Jackson.
Thank you, any further discussion? Okay, we will take a roll call vote. Nathaniel, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mega?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, Becca, I'm in yes. The motion carries.
Thank you, Sherburne. And finally, for the region, do I have a motion for the consent items for appointing Superintendent McCoy to Tech and Accept and the approval of the joint school commitments of April 29, 2025?
So moved.
Jeff, and do I have a second? Mary, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Passes for the region. All right, number eight on our agenda is the informational items, which is this fun packet on the back, which is your school committee calendar for all the meetings. You'll see there's, it's all divided up. If there's any changes, Beth, Diane will, will email us and say we need to change a date. It doesn't generally happen unless there's some kind of conflict. So that's something good to go ahead and have on your calendars. And the other thing that is, I think, of real interest, just because I like seeing where everybody's going, I find it fascinating that we have such diversity, so many students going to so many different places, is the 2025 matriculation report, which shows colleges or future plans for all of our students, and I wish them very well on their bright futures. So with that being said, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn. We have to do this by committee too.
Actually, you're.
I can do it all at once.
You're going to poll, go into executive session, not to return.
Right, but I have to do it by each committee, right? Okay, so we were going to poll to go into executive session, not to return, so as we explained, executive sessions where we do this more privately, we're going to discuss how we do collective bargaining in detail, and we are going to move not to return to open session, so this will conclude our public part of our meeting. So we can start with Dover.
Okay.
So just a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Do I poll?
Poll to go into executive session.
Poll to go into executive. And you have to, and you have to each say.
Yeah, it's, it's the same like Sherburne was doing, we have to do it by person.
Okay. Do I, but I need to.
Just a poll.
Can I get a poll to move to executive session and not to return to open meeting?
All in favor?